Hi Dan.
Roger from Chairman Brown, so is President Frasier if you'd like to start the meeting? Do you have an agenda with you or?
Yeah, I'm gonna have you get on my phone so I might have to pick up.
Okay, we can help you out here from here, thank you.
We can call order and Jill, would you give us an opening?
Those coming from the United States.
Thank you. Alright, so we will start right off in item 1.1, receive an update regarding fires currently occurring in Trinity County, no fiscal effect.
That's the Forest Service, we'll go straight to Cal Fire, we're here in a row.
Good afternoon, members of the Board, Breck of Ait, Cal Fire, Shasta Trinity Unit, Unit Chief. As you can see, you're back into another fire season that this county is being impacted by and that's nothing new for any of you, so. I would like to start with the fact that the last couple of days have been very favorable. As you're well aware, we have gone into unified command with the Forest Service and I'll explain a little bit about what that means and how we're approaching that on the unified effort. We have split the fire in two zones and I will let the team, I do have a team representative here, one of the ICs from the team, answer specific questions to the team's operations and how they're interacting together. But there is an north zone that has a Forest Service team on it, the Alaskan team with IC McDonald, and then there's a Cal Fire team, staff in the south zone with Incident Commander Mike Parks. So those teams, I'm glad to tell you, have spent quite a bit of time together the last few days, they did work together last summer, so they're familiar with each other and I feel very confident and I'm very encouraged by their interactions with each other and what they're doing together on the ground. Both teams took the fire two mornings ago and we officially went into unified command. Since then, we've had a couple of good operational periods that followed some of those. We had three nights in particular with runs into Junction City and Hayfork proper that we were fairly successful in holding those areas where we wanted to keep them, and that is essentially from the north side of Highway 299. Obviously, in the past, many of the fires that we've seen in this community, from the Organ Fire to the Junction Fire to the Helena Fire, they want to make that run up Organ Summit, which also threatens the communities of Weaverville and Douglas City. So we've weathered some of those hard runs and backhandedly, those have kind of helped us in some ways bring the fire to areas that were more manageable. Specifically, past that juncture of Junction City and down into Dutch Creek where crews made a lot of success last night down in that area, getting a lot of direct line on that fire and really protecting the rest of the community there and also increasing the ability to keep it south of Highway 299 and on the other side of the river. In Hayfork itself, as you're well aware, from the Hayfork Divide down to the Hayfork Valley is a pretty difficult country, so getting that fire out of that difficult country and bringing it down closer to the valley and not having structure loss in doing so has kind of helped us a little bit, get it in some brown and some landscape that's a little easier for firefighters down in that oak woodland, as you can imagine, up in the foothills, for us to be very effective in that area with limited resources. So things have been going very well the last two burn periods, operational shifts, and so that's very, very good news for us and we hope to see that trajectory moving forward. I'll just explain really quickly about unified command. The Forest Supervisor off the Shasta Trinity National Forest, Rachel Burkey, and myself have met and we essentially have gone into unified command as agency administrators. What that means for the teams, what that means for the fire, is from an agency perspective, we're working together and we're gonna make common sense decisions to put this fire out and protect the communities it surrounds. So the other piece of that that you're gonna see is the teams trying to work together as far as PIO messaging. It is true, these teams operationally are working two individual sides of the fire, however, if there are priorities or if there are situations that pop up that are a higher priority, they will help each other with resources and personnel as needed. But effectively, they're managing two separate parts of the fire. So from the agency perspective piece of it, through cost shares, through our PIO messaging and all those things, we're absolutely unified and the teams are working well together in the dirt, so. With that, I would take any questions you have for me and anything specific, I'll bring up IC Chris Trinidad to answer any specifics on the team or the fire itself.
Do you have any questions? We're gonna have to go talk to the government this time, so this is a question directly from the Board.
Over the last few months, there have been efforts by our local folks, our RCD, our Watershed Center, to do some burning. I just want to know if what you're seeing, and maybe it's not that far yet, I know some of this went on on Jackass Bridge, I'm not sure where else around the edge of the Weaverville Basin. I was hoping that you would say, wow, all that work that they did is really helpful and maybe it's not made it far enough to be able to say that, which would also be great, but do you speak to that?
Specifically, every bit of that work's helpful, there's pieces of that that haven't been impacted by the fire. I can tell you that all the work that's been done out there, in addition to previous fire lines that are in the area, even fire lines from the Helena Fire and the Pigeon Fire and on back at the Eagle Fires, I mean, if you've been in Trinity County very long, that canyon has a very large fire history. All those previous lines have been utilized and so every bit of that helps the firefighters. Specifically, there's a line we've used, just to give you an example, from the gun range in Junction City all the way up to Clovis and Gap, tying it back into the wilderness area. And we've used that line on the Organ Junction and Helena Fires. We opened that line up again two weeks ago, just in preparation if this fire were to make runs. So we have some different weather phenomena that occur over here that challenge us and we know what these fires want to do in Trinity County when they get up and run. Everybody that's lived here knows when it's 110 in Redding and 58 degrees in Arcata, the winds are gonna blow through the canyon. And we call that a thermal low wind and really, it's coming through the canyon at 20 to 30 miles an hour and we know that that's gonna occur often in the summertime. That's what really affects the canyon itself. We experienced that about four nights ago in the Junction City area that really blew that fire in there. Same wind that we had during the Helena Fire that did all the damage in the first night of the fire. You saw shortly after that north wind events. Ironically enough, when the north wind blows, it quiets those winds in the canyon, however, it affects other parts of Trinity County like Hayfork. So that's when we saw those runs for two nights in a row into the north winds in Hayfork. Luckily, we're kind of back at a lull with our winds. We do have more predicted winds that are potentially coming up, following a cold front and we're doing everything we can to prepare our line out there and get it locked down as tight as we can in preparation for that.
Are you prepared to talk about any questions on the Hay Press and River Complex?
I don't have a lot of specific information. I did talk to the IC off the River Complex last night that's managing those fires. I do know that there's concern for Coffee Creek and Trinity Center in regards to the Hay Press Fire. That's probably a better question for the Shasta Trinity National Forest. They're probably more intimately involved with that Incident Commander, he works for them and they're agency administrator at this point. But I am in communications with the Forest and with that IC in regards to the communities that are threatened over there.
So I guess my big question, even though we talked about not having a let it burn policy, basically this fire has become just a let it burn because they don't have the resources on the Trinity side, they do have some resources and they've done a real good job of protecting it on that side. But we now see it three miles from the wilderness line coming out and we have a lot of logging roads, a lot of logging area that's a place to defend, but you know, we're now five and a half miles away from Trinity Center. When does Cal Fire get involved? Because we know you guys are much better in structure protection and attack on the line when the Forest Services is.
We're currently involved in the Coffee Creek area by counterpart in Siskiyou County, Phil Anzo is the Unit Chief of Cal Fire in Siskiyou Unit. And those fires fall under his jurisdiction, however, they're starting to spill over into the Trinity County side out of Siskiyou County, if you've been watching him on the map. He's gonna continue to work with the teams up there, but he's been providing a strike team of engines daily out of Siskiyou Unit into the Coffee Creek Road area for about the last week. He's been doing that, so I can tell you that I've been conveying that same message about the communities up there between myself and staying in constant contact with him as well and our region office as far as resource availability out there in preparation for the fire to want to make any kind of run into those communities.
Okay, so I mean, last night, we lost structures up there and private firefighting teams were in protecting, governmental teams deemed it a little too aggressive for them. But my big worry now is I don't see any action prepping for this to come out of the wilderness. And so if that, I mean, I do go to the morning meetings every day and convey this along, but we, and there doesn't seem to be the manpower to go in there and start prepping, but we do have miles of road and miles of clear cut to at least make an attempt before Coffee Creek or Trinity Center gets run over.
Right, right, and I can't speak to the perimeter control or any of that over there. All I can tell you is as those communities are intimately threatened, we're gonna do everything we can to kick resources over that way. As you know, we're sharing them all over the place and it's a daily movement of resources from one area to the other. We did have, just a good example of that is we had a good number of resources coming up from the south, and then they broke a fire in Kern County in Sequoia National Forest that really took off, and so we're competing for resources everywhere. The best we can do is communicate these threats as they're approaching us and do everything we can to try and, you know, prepare for resources to move into those areas as they're threatened. That's why I'm continuing to have those conversations with the Unit Chief in Siskiyou, with the IC up there on the River Complex, as well as the Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Is there anything else that I, as a supervisor, can do to keep making this issue aware, understanding that there's homes that are threatened today in other places and I'm looking at worrying about something four or five days from now?
I think just continuing to communicate like you are with the team and with the Shasta Trinity National Forest as far as, you know, the particulars of the area, you know, a lot of times these teams are coming in from different areas, so the more specific information they have, the more they understand the local communities over there and what fire protection capabilities they have and, you know, those types of things are very helpful. When we get into these kind of situations in California, and we've seen it quite prevalently and it seems to get worse over the last eight years, we have a finite number of resources and there's communities threatened all over California and we're doing the very best we can to get the resources in there when there's imminent threat.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Thank you, I see we have Charles Russell from Alaska Team on now, so I would switch to Forest Services.
Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Charles Russell, I'm the Deputy IC with Alaska Team. We are an inter incident management team out of Alaska and we have federal, state, county and municipal individuals that are on our inter incident management team. And I have updates for you on how things are going on in the north zones, the issues that we're facing and some of the successes that we're also having. And then we'll have time to take in questions that you may have also. So one of the areas that I want to visit about is just on the southern end of the fire, where the division line is or the break between the zone, between the southern zone with Cal Fire Team Five and us are on the southern part of the fire, which is above or right below, sorry, Hayfork lookout. They're doing some indirect line and last night they had to do some burning to keep ahead of that. It was just pressing our lines to buy us some time. So they're working in that area, that's going fairly successful and the goal is, is to bring that indirect line down and we'll meet up with Cal Fire Five as they continue to progress towards the west. Working around over into what's Division A by Heatherwood. We had some structures, there was two structures that were lost last night. It was an area that we had some hazardous materials in there, it was identified early on, so we set up sprinkler systems in around the structures, there was a lot of debris and other things in there intermixed with the hazardous materials, so we set the sprinklers and it wasn't very far thereabouts last night. In the morning, we, it's like we had two structures that became involved, that was a difficult thing for our folks that wanted to be in there, yet with the carbine furon that was intermixed in there, we didn't fill it with safe. Other than that, we have a line that's around that area and it is filling in, we'll kind of call it the doughnut bowl, it's filling in, and we've got resources that are interspersed in around there. Going back over on to the northwest side of the fire and in the, just north of the 299 and the New River drainage, we've got resources that are working in there. We've got some heavy equipment that's headed in that direction, we've got crews that are working in there and that is ongoing. We feel good about where we're at right now, however, you know, we'll just have to see how the progresses. It is held up on the northwest side on a logging road that's in there that's been opened up. We've got some smoke jumpers in there, some bell repellers in there, we're working on some individual spots and slots over that road, that works going well also. Another focus of ours is above Helena and going north up Hobo Gulch Road, up into that backbone country. We've got approval from the Forest Service to go into the wilderness, we'll be doing some, opening some roads up, a road up and we'll have a dozer blade and a half wide, we'll be progressing north. And the whole idea behind that is to try to keep that fire from crossing the east fork to the north fork of the Trinity River. We do have some spots that cross there, we've had crews in working on those and that's been going well. So the point of that dozer line is to kind of check the fire and we don't have what we need to get all the way around on that north end, but we can at least push it up towards the wilderness versus having to get over, make a run up and get established in, I believe it's Canyon Creek. That's something that us and Cal Fire Five, Team Five, have been talking a lot about, not wanting it established in there because then that will renew the emphasis of a threat towards Weaverville and Junction City. We've got Cal Fire Team Five as a Deputy Incident Commander that is embedded here with us. We've got both Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity National Forest employees that are also helping us with our incident management team and talking about what historically has happened on fires in that drainage, which was mentioned earlier, about how prevalent fire history is in there. And we have a good understanding of, you know, what has worked in the past, what's not working now and all those dozer lines that have been opened up that haven't necessarily been successful in the past on holding some of the ridges. So anyway, we're working through that. You mentioned the fire that's from north of us, the River Complex. We too have been in communications with Incident Commander there. The closest part of their perimeter to the north end of this fire is just right at 12 miles, as of yesterday evening. So obviously, we have concerns of that, if we're to find a way in around the Trinity Alps, which it does look like there's some definitely areas that it could work its way through. We're trying to figure out, you know, exactly what our commitment is farther to the north and trying to figure out what their game plan is to not undo any of the work that we have. As also was mentioned, our communication with Cal Team Five has been great, we worked with them last year and from the very beginning of this, we've been lockstep in what our objectives and priorities are and trying to do what makes sense, what we mean on the borders, support each other where we need to and where we can. Last night, we helped them support a burnout operation they were doing in Delta Delta and our aviation assets, we are sharing those resources back and forth as needed and that's an update of essentially what we've got going on on the north zone. Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, this is Supervisor Groves. You mentioned it, but it does look to me that you could very easily get the, that north fire, I think that's the summer fire, coming down fairly aggressively down the north fork of the Trinity and meeting up. So I didn't quite maybe hear you, so you're working to come up with some sort of contingencies if that starts happening?
Yeah, we're trying to figure out, you know, we have a plan on ways that we wanted to keep it out of the infrastructure in and around Junction City and around Weaverville and all the good work that Cal Fire Team Five is doing. So we've been communicating with them on exactly what that would look like, Cal Fire Team Five and us, and making sure that that made sense and so we had a plan and we still are going to be working on that plan. It just comes into question on their fire across to the north of us and exactly what they're thinking as far as logs go, what they're thinking as far as what their lines are going to be, and so that's just another piece of the puzzle that we're trying to figure out. If we put a bunch of effort in and their lines don't match up to where we're trying to get to, you know, we don't want to undo that. So we're starting to work with them on trying to figure out what exactly that looks like, what their plan is, so that we can make sure that we tie into something that's gonna last. It makes no sense to try and tie it in somewhere to the north and to keep our fire from heading east and their fire already be, you know, on that side of the drainage or whatever the case may be. So that conversation started as it made a big run last night and is ongoing this morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, this is Supervisor Cox. I, when you say that you have been communicating on what this would look like, you're starting to kind of talk about what that plan will be, is that something that will be briefed on in the 10 a.m. sessions when you decide what that's gonna be?
Yeah, we can and will. They've got their hands full right now, so all's I can tell, all's I can tell you right now is we're gonna move forward with that Hobo Gulch plan and the idea is to try to hold that fire from moving east on our part of the fire and then once we get a little more communication back and forth with them, they've got their hands full. You mentioned the coffee area that they were talking about, they mentioned that on the call, that that was an issue, so their resources are primarily tied up with those areas that have infrastructure, structures, homes and other issues, so they don't have anything that's on the south end of their fire that's moving up into the wilderness. So those are things that we're just gonna have to work through and they may take some time because they may not have a re-plan yet based on the amount of resources they have, so. But we will continue to try to have that, we will continue to have that dialogue with them and try to do something that makes sense to maybe even, if need be, make a catcher's match up mid on our side with what they've got to the south.
So I guess to be fair, just to let you know that with the previous team that was here, we're pretty used to in the morning hearing the plan and the contingency plan and a backup to the contingency plan, and I understand that a transition must be a really difficult time for everyone and it's also really difficult to not, to have been used to hearing what those plans were and we would just really love that once those decisions are made that that would somehow get communicated.
I understand and we do have what we call our base model, our primary or alternate contingency and emergency plans, so we do have that. We've got a operations that's, is a strategic operations person that is on, that's what he's looking at by looking at weather, looking at what fires have previously done, looking at what this fire's done based on criteria of wind and fuel moisture and relative humidity, et cetera, so we are working on that. We will do a better job of briefing to that for you guys. However, it's going to be difficult for us to be able to do that for the fires to the north of us and what they got going on.
Yeah, are we gonna speak about the southeast part, the Douglas City on down through Dutch Creek area today? Was that your part or was Kathy gonna speak on that?
Yeah, we'll let the south zone, Cal Fire, speak on that. Thank you guys for your time and we'll tour down.
Good afternoon, members of the Board, I can speak to that southeast portion of Douglas Creek coming, or Douglas City coming out of Junction City. So just like the other zone had talked about, we have been able to utilize their resources and pick up what we call an anchor point. If you're able to look at the map, there's a black piece that is northwest on the map of Junction City. As that fire, we've been able to go direct as it comes down to Dutch Creek. As it comes off the hill, we've been able to pick up where we can coming down to the road system through there and then where we can't access to the road where it comes back through it, we've been able to lay hoes and go direct and bring a little bit of fire with it to clean it up. What that's able to do for us is as it comes all the way down to that road, we're able to have that secured. We've been having success the past few days with the wind that we've had in our favor, so we've been able to be successful in that area that helped protect that. What we're asking now and what we're gonna need is this couple of days of the northwest wind that we have coming, is just a little bit of time to hold on to that work that we've done. Working with the other zone in place and then able to provide us some resources throughout the night is able to give us the force power that we need in there to actually create that and get some depth in the black, which ultimately from now gives us the protection and that's where we're at now. Thank you.
So do you have any other questions? Alright, so you have cleared them. Thank you guys for the update and hopefully we can move on to county matters.
Thank you guys for the update and I believe we can move on to county matters. These items included in our routine are controversial matters and are listed out by department. Understood, order staff may request that an item be heard out ordered. I don't think they're worried about that today since we only have one item. Item 2.1, ratify the director of emergency services proclamation and confirm the existence of a local emergency in Trinity County pertaining to the 2021 River Complex. No physical impact. And I'm assuming this will be Liz Hamilton?
Can you hear me? Okay. No, it's Ed Russley. I was going to speak to it. So when we, when we set out the proclamation for the monument and McFarland Fire, this fire was still just well into the Alps and it really had not been established or anything. And so as it progressed, really simultaneously with what was happening with the other two fires, it just got to a point where we started being concerned that it wasn't just going to be up in the Alps and that it was going to potentially go down toward Coffee Creek, toward structures, some of the homes that were up there. We were looking at probably 10, 12 miles out the road, Coffee Creek River. So we wanted to be sure that we got everything included in the proclamation itself. And so I worked with CAL OES and then they recommended that we go ahead and name this fire just so that it was added to the proclamation. So this will be a separate, a separate type of situation, but we're hoping to just get it added to our other proclamation that we have already received state approval for CDAA on.
Okay, thank you. Does this reach the public comment, I believe? All right. Do we have any public comment?
No, I don't see, there's no chat, no man raised and I don't see anybody unmuting themselves.
Nobody in the boardroom, so no comment.
All right. No public comment?
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion?
And a motion by Supervisor Groves. Second, Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, there you go.
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Doggett?
Aye.
Vice Chair Frazier?
Aye.
Four oh, thank you very much.
All right, I think that's it, so we will adjourn.